Tuesday, 3 September, 2019 at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call the Village of North Hudson Regular Board of Trustees Meeting to order. And a small invocation, I hope everyone would join us in praying for, it's school started today, and I would like to, you know, I hope everyone will pray for our schoolchildren, our, our teachers, our educators, that they have a safe and successful school year. And I hope everyone can, you know, remembers in their prayers, I mean, the hurricane victims right now down in the Caribbean, soon to be possibly into the United States, and please remember those in your prayers, and, and also the people that have been murdered in the senseless violence from people that just, I don't even have words to describe. Roll call, please.
Trustees head?
Here.
Leaf?
Here.
Matts?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Pike?
Here.
President Wecken?
Here.
Trustees Zeiss?
Here.
Thank you. All right, item two, review and approve minutes from the regular board meeting of 6th August, 2019. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of August 6, 2019.
Thanks Cathy, is there a second?
A second.
Thanks Lori. Any corrections, additions, or amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item three is comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on today's agenda. Is there anyone that has something to bring forward? Please step up to the podium, identify yourself, your address, and your business.
Hi, Todd Frank. I'm here on behalf of Nido Development. We've got a development just north of town here, North Valley Estates, at the corner of 35 V and, 35 and V. We kind of missed a few of our dates, so we're not set to be in front of your planning commission, I think, until the first of October. But our surveyor had asked me to come down and drop off our preliminary plat, which has been approved by the county, a conditional, conditionally approved by the county, as well as the township, and just wanted me to share that with you guys, whether you had any comments or questions on it. We've got 10 lots, they're all three acres, they all fall within the guidelines, and the village engineer, as well as your village building inspector, I think, have already had comments on our plat, which they were no comments. So we're just hoping to do whatever we can to make the board aware of, you know, what coming up, hopefully, you know, soon after the planning commission meeting. We've got several residents that would like to start building this fall, and it sounds like we might get jammed up if we don't have grass growing in the ditches by the end of October, which might be tough, so anything you guys could do to help in any way would be greatly appreciated.
Where, which, I mean, you said V and 35?
Yep, right on the very, on the-
It'd be the southeast kind of big corner of the intersection where that giant weed field is right now?
Yeah, I'm gonna try and mow that thing in the next week here, so.
Really?
Well, the, the fire department had asked us if they could do a controlled burn, and then the storm started coming, and it got too, got too wet, so.
Right.
So we're gonna try and get it cut down, but apologize that it's gotten a little bit out of hand, we thought the fire department was gonna burn.
So we can't comment anymore, but this is gonna come to the October, hopefully?
October 1st.
Okay, thank you.
September 18th plan.
Just wanna confirm.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, and I'm sure you're going, you're dealing with Teresa and everybody ought to say Joe, so.
Yep, yep, and like I said, they signed off on our meeting with them a few weeks ago, so we're conditionally approved from them, conditionally approved from the county. We're just waiting for the village to give us any other comments, or-
Yeah, it's actually territorial, so I mean, that's, yeah, okay. No, appreciate it.
Yeah, so.
And what, you're with what developer?
Uh, Nido Development.
Nido?
Yeah.
That's new to the area.
It's, it's new. Working with definitive builders, Nick Schobek is one of the, he's, he's been a builder and a resident of the area for a couple decades. He's built several homes out in Birch Park, but that's who we're working with.
Well, I appreciate you, you know, giving us a heads up.
Yeah, well, thanks for the time.
No problem, good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, any other comments from the floor? Hearing none, we'll go to item four. Joint Library Board update from Robert Sisick, our library representative, Bob. Welcome, and thank you for bringing us up to date on the library.
Thanks for hearing me. You know, we had our July board meeting, and the board approved the 2020 budget. So I came here to talk about, really, four things, won't take long. The Hudson Public Library financial status, the Village North Hudson financial contributions, there's also another issue that's called the Area Library Dissolution. That's an interesting one. And then we have the, the HPL renovation, which is an ongoing issue. First, the financial status. Okay, the budget for the library increased for 2020. It's still way under the state statute. The state statute allows them 1.5 million. The 2020 budget is at 916,000. It increased a little bit because last year they lost two key people. One went to Woodbury, and one went to University Stout. And so they had to increase their wages a little bit, to try to hold people. So anyway, the budget went up a little bit, and as a result of that, well, not really as a result of that, but the, the North Hudson contribution is under that 2% per year increase thing till we get the deficit figured out. Anyway, so the village increase is gonna increase by 2% for 2020. And so that would be an increase of-
I'll just correct you right now, if the finance committee approves, and the budget committee approves, we'll do that. We're not gonna say that we are, but I mean, right now, we understand that we're on the hook for 2%.
I think it's, I have a number here. It is $1,662.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, but, I mean, you, you said that we, we're gonna pay that, I mean, that's gotta be approved by the board for it.
Yeah. Well, that's one reason why the, the library board did their thing in July, because I think, what do you do, your budget here in the next month or so? So it gives time to know what the-
We're in budget right now, pretty much.
Okay. So there is that 2% increase, and that's gonna continue on until this problem gets fixed, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. As far as the village contribution, they put out some really interesting stats on how much tax money the area library is saving versus having to have a Hudson library. If the, if there was a Hudson library, the North Hudson would send their tax money to the county, and the county would reimburse the library. And the difference between that is quite a bit. In the last six years, the difference amounted to $147,000.
To who?
That North Hudson actually saved by being a member of the area library. The taxpayers, they would've been paying that to the county. So that's pretty interesting. So I would, I would hope that the, the village continues to support that area library. But the county contributions are strange, and I don't understand them. However, the tax money that goes to the county should get reimbursed to the libraries, and it does to every library except the Hudson library. The Hudson library only gets 70% of their allocated money from the county. And I ask questions about that, and I haven't been there long enough to know all the details about the history, but it's got to do with Roy Solberg is on this bardo to do this. And so that's why Hudson Area Library only gets 70% of the county funds, which is unfortunate. If they were getting 100% of what the county should give them, the way I understand it, there wouldn't be a 2% increase. It is what it is. All right, let's, let's talk about that area library dissolution. This just came up at the last session, you were there, Stan. So what they're talking about is the area library, meaning the Hudson library plus all the members, might go back to a Hudson library, not an area library. And the way I understand it is it boils down to this. Roy Solberg has enough pull in the Hudson City Council with three, four, maybe five members, to where if they vote to move back to a Hudson library, it's gonna go. Is that what you understood?
No, they, the, the members all have to, they, they were hoping that, that St. Joe and the town of Hudson would voluntarily leave and increase their taxes by astronomical numbers, which-
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is the resolution to support the Hudson Community Library, so, yeah, no, it's a, yeah. Roy is definitely causing some issues. I, I don't, I don't understand how a member of the county board that represents the city of Hudson could vote to not fund the local library by the, the same funds that every other library makes.
I know.
And there's two other county commissioners in the city of Hudson that voted the same way. I'm very confused about that.
I am too.
Continue to report, please.
So can you tell me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Brian?
Go ahead.
But where did this dissolution motion come up? Which meeting was it in? You said "they," I'm just trying to understand which meeting you're talking about. Was it city council, was it library board? Which meeting was it in?
It came up at the Hudson City Council.
Okay, thank you. I'm just, I just didn't understand which meeting it was.
Yeah, no, Roy presented it at, it was about three weeks ago, or something like that. Okay, Bob.
So, anyway, if the library board has a vote on this, which I don't think they're gonna, it's gonna be just a matter of the members, I'm all in favor of not having it happen, unless I hear otherwise from you people. I, I think it's ridiculous, and just like Mayor Rich O'Connell, he said, if, if they were to do this, that would be suicide for the city of Hudson. Financial suicide. So he has no idea why the Hudson City Council is moving in that direction. He don't know. It, it just doesn't make any sense. But it is, that's what's going on. There's one other issue here that I think is kind of a dead issue, but it keeps coming up. It's their, the library, the building itself renovation. The deal behind that is they're up against a limit on the amount of floor loading for the second floor. They got all the books on the second floor, and the floor is basically getting overloaded with weight. So to solve that problem, they need to renovate the library and move some of that weight downstairs. And what I suggested was going more into the digital curriculum. You look at the stats, and the digital curriculum increases like 20-some percent per year, way above any of the hard copy or other books. And so if they were to just increase their digital curriculum, that doesn't really take up a lot of floor loading, so, I don't know, we'll see what happens, but that keeps coming up about the renovation. That's it, unless there's questions from you people.
Any questions for Bob?
The floor loading, how do they know? How are they proving that the load is too much?
They had, they had a study done.
Okay.
And according to the study, it's right at its floor load limit.
Who did the study?
I don't know. I could go back and get the information for you, but off the top of my head, I don't They had a consultant come in and do the study.
I just, someone told me, and it's just gossip, I guess, but that there are certain people that would like to move to that second floor, and that had a lot more to do with it than the load.
I think you got, I think there's a lot to that. Yes, I think it's a lot more than just numbers.
And those.
Yeah. But that's not what's being discussed.
Right.
Yeah, I, I've got the feeling too, that there's ulterior agendas going on here.
Okay, and then remind me who are, who are the, I know, North Hudson, Town of Hudson, who's all involved in-
St. Joe.
St. Joe, and Hudson.
Hudson, yeah.
That's it?
Four, four members.
Not Troy?
Troy's not involved.
Okay.
No. Troy, Troy is, got the political power to influence the city of Hudson.
On this?
On this issue?
No, no, on the dissolution.
Oh.
Yeah.
That seems right.
The way, I was talking to the mayor, Rich, and he said that Roy does have enough pull with the Hudson City Council to where if in fact they do dissolve, they, they're gonna vote for dissolution. Why? Like, we talked about, it makes no sense, but regardless, there's this thing going on. And it's got the same to do with, why doesn't the county reimburse-
Right.
-100% of the taxes back to the library, same thing.
Then we can't get an answer.
No, no. Even, even Rich, he, he doesn't know the answer.
They were shot down 15 to 2 at the county.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, he just lifts up his hands, he says, long story.
But he, Bob brought this back up to us back in February, you talked about this. Discussion was, talked about aerial versus dissolution back in February.
Yeah, that didn't, the dissolution part didn't come up until the last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. If it did go back to a Hudson library, that would affect the taxpayers' taxes for North Hudson.
That's what you brought, yeah.
Yeah. And like I said, that amounted to $147-some thousand over the last six years in tax difference.
I remember, I got the notes on it, yeah, you said that.
So the only thing that makes sense is they, they want more money, the county.
Well, the-
And if the, if the people that are members of this vote, like, were looking to vote possibly to do something, if St. Joe, the Town of Hudson, and North Hudson say no, can Hudson still just dissolve?
That's what I was wondering myself.
I don't believe so.
You know, Bob?
I'm sorry, I wasn't-
If the members, except for Hudson City Council, vote to keep that area library-
Yeah.
Can they still, can Hudson still dissolve it?
I understand it's gotta be unanimous.
Oh.
Matt, part of the contract is the members have to vote to get out or-
Yeah.
We should be all right there, 'cause I know that the, this, the resolution we're gonna attend to next, and is being presented both in, in, out at the Town of Hudson tonight, and at St. Joe next week when they have their meeting, so.
Okay.
There's no desire by any of the members to dissolve, dis- ban the Hudson Community Library.
None of the four members, at least, that were represented on the board, have any desire to go that route, back to municipal library, and neither does any of the board members at the library.
Okay. Last, last question, how do you find out to, why the county isn't reimbursing the 100%?
I, I asked. I, I talked to our county supervisor, Tom, I talked to Rich, I talked to the other board members, and nobody can give me a good answer that makes sense.
Isn't that an administrator question for the county?
I would ask. The county board is the one that voted.
It's their board.
Their board is voting to just give 70%.
Yeah. And, and like Stan said, the vote last time was like 15 to 2 or something.
Yeah.
To only do 70%.
Yeah.
Bob, is that Tina Norris still in charge of the library? She's the lady, she's the lady that came here and gave us update in March.
Tina is still there.
You mentioned a couple people had a laugh, that's what, that was one of her. Okay, good.
That was the previous.
Other staff, I believe.
Okay.
You don't want to lose her.
No, she was good.
Anything else? Bob, thank you very much for the update.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated.
I appreciate, by the way, of being on that board, I think it's a good thing.
Huh?
I like being on that board, it's a good thing.
Well, you're doing a good job so far, and you'll stuck there until I get, you know, fired from this job, so.
Hey!
Or, or you leave town, or something like that, so.
I have no intention of leaving town right now, anyway.
All right, that sounds good, thank you very much. All right, item five is Resolution 2019-06.
Do we need to read this, or can I just move to approve Resolution Number 2019-06?
You should be, let's see, let's go down to, let's try the now, therefore. If you go down to the second of the last paragraph.
Now therefore be it resolved that the undersigned affirm their membership and commitment to the Hudson Area Joint Library as stated in the September 4, 2008 Hudson Area Joint Library Agreement. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded by the village clerk to the library director of the Hudson Area Joint Library to the city of Hudson, Town of Hudson, and Town of St. Joe.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution as presented, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's a unanimous decision, thank you very much. Bob, unless you wanna sit here for the rest of it, you're free to go and enjoy your evening.
Right.
Okay, this one, uh, can-
He's not here, so.
He's not here, so.
Stick with the 14th date.
It's amended class, parent B slash parent class B liquor license for extended premises, Village Inn on Saturday, September 14th. I understand that he has requested a date change?
He did, but I told him to be here if he wanted to ask for it, so I'm not sure if he still wants that or not.
So without Lee being here, we'll have to have him petition for a special board meeting to change the date, since we are not allowed to change, you know, random dates without notification, is that correct, Paul?
Correct.
Thank you.
So we don't-
So do we even act on this?
Yeah, why, why wouldn't we just act on that 14th date? 'Cause maybe he sticks with that date.
Excuse me?
Why don't we act on this 14th?
Oh, we can vote to approve the 14th.
That way we get it done, and-
In case he comes back, because it looks like he had the 22nd, scratched it off, and put the 14th, so.
Okay, well, all right.
It's on the agenda, and still-
No, that's a great, that's, that's a good plan.
Right.
But I, you know, 'cause I just learned earlier today that he wanted to change it, but, no, that's, you know, we can approve the 14th, if, if that's, if there's a motion and a second.
Stan, I move that the class B, class slash class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for the Village Inn be temporarily amended for an event taking place Saturday, September 14, 2019, from noon to 10:00 PM with the following conditions. Area outside of the building to be completely enclosed with secure fencing to be accessed only from near the main entrance area of the building. Use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced-in area. Item two, use of outside area only with specific permission of the village board for each particular date and event. Item three, owner to provide equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot areas fenced during time of event. Maintain the no parking alley between the Village Inn and Zappa Brothers for emergency vehicle and Village Public Works traffic during the event. Number four, owner to be responsible for banned music volume and outside music to end no later than 10:00 PM.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the-
I want to comment, and again, if he's gonna change it, he has to come with a special meeting to change the date, if he wants to change it, at this point.
If he wants to change the date.
Yep, okay.
Is this their, what's the reasoning for the party?
Excuse me?
No, I don't think it's their animal.
Do you have any idea what he's doing, chief? Do you know what this?
You have what I presume.
Okay.
Okay.
He usually has an event in September of each year, that's why the previous one's crossed off, 'cause that's from a different year.
Ah, okay.
So I don't know what, what it is he does.
All right.
Okay.
Not sure. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the September 14th approval date, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, item seven, River Valley Deer Management Approval Requested. Item A is 2019, 2020 River Valley Deer Management Contract.
It's not in the package.
We've done this, how many years, Lon?
Eight years previous.
Eight years? And nothing has really changed?
No, there are just fewer deer. There are just fewer deer, Stan.
That's, that's, then that's a positive.
That's a positive, yes.
And I would just like to let you know that there's a resident, her name is Suzie Palenti, and she has a bed and breakfast over on Bald Eagle.
Okay.
And she has begged me to get somebody to come in and, you know, get those hasta-eaten critters out of her plants.
Okay.
So, uh-
She's over on Bald Eagle?
She's on Bald Eagle, and she says you can go right off the deck, and she'd provide coffee and biscuits in the morning, I think, you know, so, just to let you know, but, uh...
Very good.
Uh, let's see.
We'll see the motion for the contract first.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the 19, 2020 River Valley Deer Management Contract?
So move.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cathy?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
Can you just ask questions?
Sure.
I read about, I was reading it on the-
Could you please step up to the podium and name and the address, please?
Just so if anyone's watching online.
Well, yeah, I mean, I heard rumor that people watch us occasionally, so.
I heard like nine views on the last one.
Jane Betts, Pratt Keystone Court, North Hudson. Nothing against it, I would just, people ask, trying to understand, it's done with, with the bull hunting timeframe, and is that, so anybody that's been approved for the hunting would be hunting in the village within those hunting hours, like any other place, bull hunting?
Yeah, every, every hour, I mean, the, the, the rules-
Hours are the same, right? We're, we're bound by the DNR hunting regulations.
Okay, so if we, somebody sees someone hunting, that's why they're out there at that time, no special hours?
Right, no, there won't be middle of the night, or anything like that.
Okay.
And it's on those properties that you've received permission for, from the homeowner.
Right, it's not, someone else could do it, if, if they weren't one of our few hunters, but, you know, I mean, they shouldn't do it, but I'm not saying-
So you said the property, so it isn't the whole village, it's, so where is that noted? Where, what properties?
Really not.
I know.
And we're not going to.
Okay.
It's covert.
It won't be here, I don't want it.
No, I don't want it.
We just don't want any, any, everything is, is nice, and we're only, we only go where people want us to be there, and we're not gonna bother anyone.
Okay. Just had some questions that weren't covered. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The typical person can't just shoot deer up.
No.
And, and the people that they're choosing all are certified, they take a class.
And background check.
Yeah, so it's a set people that we've picked right here.
The list is in the, yeah, the motion, yeah.
Those people take classes, background check, and then they have certain areas they go, and then that's where they shoot or take them down.
When's the sign up for this?
For, for a landowner, or for a, they would have to call me, and, so at this point, our, our slate is set.
Right.
Now if someone came and said they wanted to join us, we'd have to get over mark, they have to do the background check, we can add, you can add.
We should, you should be up at the stand, so the people seeing can hear you, please, sorry.
Mayhem.
But it's a voice with nobody.
I thought it was here.
So it is, it is a, it is a, it is not a public deal.
Yeah.
Anyone who wanted to apply to be part of our group would be subject to our discretion based on hunter education, experience, scores, you know, what, what, whatever, I mean, those type of things, so it's not, we don't take it lightly.
The reason I bring it up is because year by year, we, we do this, we go through this and okay this, but the hunters are already picked before, you, you just don't add- and okay this, but the hunters are already picked before, you, you just don't advertise at all.
Nope.
That if you wanted to hunt in North Hudson.
Right, cause it's not a hunt, it's a deer removal program.
Deer removal.
Yeah, it's a private contract between, um, this company and the city of Hudson, whi- which is service that we provide for free. We all live here. So, we aren't, we do not want it to be a public thing because the more people that are involved, the harder it is to control.
Sure.
And control and safety is what's utmost.
Okay.
And we've had no issues.
None. And we are trying to keep it that way.
Perfect.
Exactly. So, which is not to say that anyone who wanted to come, who wanted to be a hunter, could certainly contact me, um, and we would talk about it and, and discuss it. And we, if, you know, we would welcome more people. They just, we just need to be very careful because it's, it's not to be taken lightly.
Yep.
Any other questions? The best question I ever had when I was up here is someone asked us, they said, you know, we have a lot of deer, and so now we have a deer tick problem. Do you think your hunting is going to help with the deer ticks? And I said, no, ma'am, they're much too small. We can't hit them with our, with our bows and arrows. Other than that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on the contract? Hearing none, all in favor of the contract as submitted, signal we're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And B is, uh, hunter applications for the North Hudson Deer Management Program. Uh, I believe the chief has done the background checks as per usual. Uh, is there a motion and a second to approve?
Stan, move to approve the applications of Lon, Fia, Bradley Coulter, Ricky Kraus, and Harvey Baird for participation in the Village of North Hudson Deer Management Program during the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty hunting season.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kirk. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the, allowing the hunter applications to proceed, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Lon.
Can I do signees real quick?
Definitely call Suzie.
And then, and then I'll, uh, I'll sign them and get one back to you, the letter. The second one, can you do real quick? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Have a great day. Okay, item number eight, uh, president's comments, and, uh, I really don't have anything to bring forward. Melissa?
Um, just an update. In case you haven't heard, Congressman Duffy will resign from Congress effective September twenty-third due to family reasons. So, due to this, there will be a need for a special election. Um, the date is not known at this time, so I don't have any further information on that. Just note that there will be one coming.
I think it'll be this fall.
I really don't know.
Okay.
I'm guessing before the end of the year.
Yeah, September.
Yeah. It ends at September, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's it?
Yes.
Okay, uh, item number nine, planning commission, uh, chair update, uh, not here. Uh, application from Gary Zapp to create a two-lot extraterritorial C S M in the Town of Hudson, approval requested. Now, let's see, that, uh-
Stan, like to move to approve the application for a two-lot extraterrestrial C S M from applicant Gary Zappel located in the Town of Hudson, pin number zero two zero dash one three seven four dash two five dash zero zero one, with the following conditions. Comments from the Town of Hudson and the St. Croix County Planning and zoning department be addressed prior to signature of the final C S M. Village of North Hudson approval is contingent on final approval from the Town of Hudson and St. Croix County. Item two, developer must provide for the Village of North Hudson certificate on the second page of the C S M for the village president and village administrator cl- slash clerk to sign. And item three, provide a copy of the final recorded C S M to the village.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh, is there, uh, comments or questions?
Just, I was at the meeting, and it went through, no one showed up for the public hearing, and it went through without question, so.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Um-
Are you gonna let her talk?
Uh, we, we have a-
Can I ask?
Okay, so, extraterritorial C M S, what is that?
C S M?
C S M, I'm sorry.
It's located in the Town of Hudson. He's splitting a lot into two. It's in our extraterritorial area, which is a mile and a half from our boundary.
Oh, okay.
So, it's not in the village.
Okay.
And C S M stands for Certified Survey Map.
Okay, well, some of us that are coming to the meetings trying to figure this out, understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have a question. What isn't, what do they consider the outlot? Is that a buildable lot?
No.
Versus? Okay.
Outlot's non-buildable.
Non-buildable, so it's, so it, I mean, why would you split it then?
I think originally the whole thing was an outlot because there was no access to it.
Ah.
And now they've made a deal with the county, um, to get access. The county's gonna get a piece, um, to incorporate into the park that's gonna be adjacent to that to the north.
Gotcha.
And as part of that, they're gonna get one, they're gonna get one lot, um, that they're going to put one house on and not split it anymore.
And then the outlot becomes park, basically?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Gary would have been here, but I think he's at the Town of Hudson right now.
Yeah.
They're meeting on it tonight.
Is there, uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of application, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Item ten, personnel and finance committee recommendations. Claims approval requested.
Uh, Stan, can I move to recommend the board to approve the September two thousand nineteen non-recurring claims of seventy-seven thousand one hundred ninety dollars and sixty-nine cents?
Thank you, Kirk. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Tim, thank you. Uh, comments or questions? Hearing none. Uh, Kathy?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Thank you. And item B is amend twenty nineteen budget, approval requested.
Stan, can I move to amend the Village of North Hudson's twenty nineteen annual budget by transferring eight thousand from the unassigned fund to cover the purchase of capital equipment for the police department and general government office?
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions? Hearing none. Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item eleven, public works committee recommendations. Chair update, Brian?
Stan, we did meet, and we have nothing to bring forward.
Thank you. Item twelve, public safety committee recommendations. Tim?
Uh, Stan, we did meet. Um, we have nothing to carry forward, but I do have one comment. I'd like to thank the chief and his work with his officers and North Hudson, I'm sorry, Hudson Police Officers and St. Croix County in providing a very safe and fun Pepperfest event this last year, this last event. So, I'd like to thank the chief for his work.
Here, here. Yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Just clearing that up.
Under a stressed-
Thank you.
Under a stressed staff, too, that, uh-
Yes.
Yeah, and so, and that's why I wanted to come up. So, for, part of the chair update too, is, uh, we do have a current vacancy that we are attempting to fill. We have, um, postings on wilynot.org as well as the employment section of the village, uh, website to, uh, fill a vacancy that we have in the police department. That will stay open until September sixteenth. So, if you know of anyone that has an associate's degree and is certified in the state of Wisconsin or certifiable in the state of Wisconsin as a law enforcement officer, um, we ask that they apply. We're looking for good quality candidates that are looking to stay with us. Uh, and so, that will open, uh, will be open until September sixteenth at four thirty P M. Uh, we have had a couple of applications coming in. We typically get a lot towards the end, but just want to make sure that the public is aware if they do have people that are trying to come back into town, or people that are currently in, uh, the schooling for law enforcement or for criminal justice, that we do have that. And the, um, process for filling the sergeant's position is nearly done. Uh, the candidate has a conditional offer of employment. Will complete his psychological on Thursday, and so hopefully things will go well, and then we can get them on board in a couple weeks. So, just wanted to update the board on our hiring process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Okay, nothing to bring forward there. Uh, let's see, public welfare did not meet, and park board met, but didn't have quorum, I believe?
Yeah, and then we also had our last movie in the park, which was Secret Life of Pets Two. Um, we counted, I think, fifty-two people. Um, neighborhood watched stop by and gave out free Skittles. That was pretty nice. That was a hot topic there. And then the chief stopped by again. I really appreciate that for, um, everyone seeing their presence there. And thank you, PJ, for helping us again with all of that. That's it.
Thanks, Kirk. Okay, there. Okay, item fourteen is convene in the closed session.
Fifteen.
Board may convene in the closed session per statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parents lowercase e for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require, and per nineteen dash eight five, parent one, parent lowercase g to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy the governing body may adopt in litigation which the village is likely to become involved regarding termination of existing contract with the city of Hudson. This involves EMS, correct?
Yes, sorry.
Alrighty, uh, so, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move to go into closed session.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Phil. And we were going into closed session, so, uh, you are no longer allowed to be in the, the meeting, so, uh, thank you.
Stan, I think you have to vote.
Everyone for-
We have to, we have to vote.
Yeah, you gotta vote, too.
What?
We didn't vote to go in.
Oh, all right.
We're so close.
Yes. Dumbest.
All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Bye, chief.